Path Metro Villas will integrate housing, employment, healthcare and other supportive services. The project has been a collaborative effort between varying agencies.
United Healthcare is proud to be the largest investor in the Path Metro Villas. This is a model community that really showcases how public and private sectors together can make a difference.
When completed, there will be a total of 187 apartments as part of Path Metro Villas, but for now, they are building 65 apartments here and anticipate to open by next year. In Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Path Metro Villas will serve homeless individuals, low-wage earners and veterans. Well, switching gears now to students who don't have to graduate to begin working in emerging technical fields. Gil Reyes shows us from a recent job fair at L.A. Trade Tech College.
Student Gallo Vasquez has dreams of one day becoming a civil engineer for the city of L.A. He knows good-paying jobs are out there, citing the city's plan to earthquake retrofit thousands of buildings.
L.A. is a really old city, so sooner or later we're going to have to remodel everything. Like, we're prone to like earthquakes and all that.
He and other students from Orthopedic Medical Magnet High School are among the 2,000 job seekers, making the rounds at L.A. Construction and Associated Careers Day, the event hosted by L.A. Trade Tech College, which has close ties to the building trades and the jobs they offer. And that includes paid student internships on the way to graduation.
So where the student can be working, making money and getting credit. So even sometimes if it doesn't take you two years, it might take you two years and a half or three years, at least you're working on something you love.
With a shot at being hired full-time later. One student employer is LAX.
And the salary's not bad, yeah. They'll start out again as internships, but it could be anywhere between $15 and $20 an hour.
For an internship?
For an internship.
And then from there, they can move on up?
Oh, absolutely.
And how high up can they get?
Oh, endless. I mean, you know, we've seen students start out as interns and then eventually become managers and then, uh, you know, running their own companies.
Also hiring is construction company Swinton Builders.
We're looking to recruit from college-educated students, also craft. So we hire, since we're a general contractor, we hire all trades.
And do you hire right on the spot?
We haven't yet, but I wouldn't be surprised if we did.
Tech students go booth to booth weighing their options, like possible careers in solar technology and alternative fuels.
It's really nice to see what my opportunities are.
Yeah, I'm gonna just keep on going around and then think of which one's the best route.
So for these particular job seekers, this is the place to be in the city of Los Angeles. Consider that throughout its 92-year history, L.A. Trade Tech College has offered more career technical programs than any other community college west of the Mississippi. In South Los Angeles, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
L.A. Trade Tech also offers courses in carpentry, welding, culinary arts and fashion design. And if those careers don't interest you, how about becoming a firefighter? If you're a young woman, you may just have the spark it takes to become an L.A. City firefighter. A group of young ladies certainly thinks so, as they put their bodies to the test at a recent training camp for females ages 14 to 18. Gil Reyes shows us.
Not just pretty in pink, they're out to prove they're just as good, if not better, than the guys.
Women do have the ability to become a firefighter, and it does take a lot of strength and courage to become a firefighter.
The L.A. City Fire Department hosts a two-day girls' training camp in Panorama City. An introduction to firefighting, it's also a way to encourage more young women to join the department, which at last count was just 3% female.
LAFD wants more women because we know the positive impacts that women bring to any organization. So by increasing the women within the LAFD, we know that we can provide better service to the community just by bringing more diversity.
You guys gotta smile.
But can these young women handle the physical demand?
You got it, you got it, you got it.
For starters, they'll have to strap on 70 pounds of gear for a typical firefight. Councilmember Nuri Martinez, a huge supporter of more opportunities for women, grew up in this section of the San Fernando Valley.
When I was growing up, I don't remember ever seeing a woman firefighter until I was an adult. So it's really important to ensure that our young girls in our city can meet other firefighter women, be involved in fire camp, hopefully get involved with our Fire Cadet program and our Fire Academy Magnet Schools.
Firefighter Magnet programs are happening at Wilson High School in El Surino and Banning High School in San Pedro. There are also youth fire academies at several fire stations, and of course, there's this once-a-year girls' camp.
So the parents, pay attention to win these camps and opportunities come up and have your young daughters come out and participate.
In Panorama City, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Councilmember Martinez wants to expand girls' camp to twice a year. She's encouraging more local businesses to come forward to help fund the program. Well, it was a day of giving as the community passed out much-needed items to people who are homeless, but this charity event also highlighted the importance of giving back. Rasha Goel has more.
Haircuts, shoes and clothes were just some of the goodies attendees received at this annual charity event put on by the Union Rescue Mission.
We have lots of people experiencing homelessness down here on Skid Row, and it's important that they receive the necessary supplies they need, like hygiene kits, food, but most importantly, to build relationships.
A school group also participated with students passing out duffel bags, giving the children an opportunity to learn about the importance of giving back.
It's very helpful. It's just, it's a great blessing.
You wouldn't recognize all the people that need help like this. It's incredible.
For some, these small gifts are a gesture of kindness that go a long way.
There's so many people here that do have needs, and it's wonderful when you see humanity help humanity. And in such a marvelous way, you're giving them duffel bags that have style.
This isn't something that the Union Rescue Mission does alone. We have a lot of partners, volunteers and organizations that donate supplies, money, time to help put this event together.
For many here, it's an opportunity to regain their self-value, spirit and dignity. I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week.
Well, he's the first African-American baseball player to truly impact the game. The Dodgers organization immortalizes the late, great Jackie Robinson with a magnificent sculpture. Gil Reyes shows us.
One, two, three.
The blue curtain drops at Dodger Stadium to reveal a majestic statue of Hall of Famer Jackie Robinson, the man who broke Major League Baseball's color barrier. Dodgers co-owner Magic Johnson says he's elated.
This is one of the greatest days of my life, to be associated with the Dodgers and to honor an American hero, a guy who deserves to have a statue. And it's also great for our fans.
Exchanging a hug during the ceremony were Robinson's widow, Rachel Robinson, and retired Dodgers announcer, Vin Scully. Jackie Robinson played second base for the Brooklyn Dodgers from 1947 to 1956. He was Rookie of the Year, a six-time All-Star, and became MLB's first African-American Most Valuable Player. He also played in six World Series, most notably stealing home in the Dodgers' 1955 championship win over the New York Yankees. And he did it all with class, despite heightened prejudice in Major League Baseball at the time. Though Robinson retired before the Dodgers moved to L.A., the statue by artist Branley Cadet will stand at Chavez Ravine, a lasting tribute to #42's athleticism, and more importantly, his strength of character. At Dodger Stadium, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
His legacy also continues with the Jackie Robinson Foundation. Over the past 40 years, it's provided financial aid and mentorship to 1,500 students. While city officials take steps to expand homeless shelters, the city hosts an Earth Day celebration and helping building owners retrofit their properties. All this in City B. To help people who are living on the street find shelter and assistance, the L.A. City Council approved a shelter crisis declaration authored by Councilmember Jose Huizar and Councilmember Mike Bonin. This will allow the city to open more shelter facilities to help get an estimated 28,000 people who are homeless off the street. This vote is a key step in a series of responses to the homelessness crisis. A planning committee recently recommended removing self-imposed city instructions, including ordinance language that previously only allowed a shelter crisis to be declared during winter months and limited them to 120 days a year, among other restrictions. Councilmember Jose Huizar said the vote gives the city the ability to act on that crisis in the short term while giving hope, help and service to people who desperately need it. Mother Earth was the star of the show during L.A. Sanitation's Second Annual Citywide Earth Day L.A. Festival held at Exposition Park. More than 50 exhibits dedicated to promoting sustainability were on display, including family-friendly activities. Kids got to explore city vehicles, learn about seed planting, and lots of mulch was given away. There was also plenty of entertainment on the stage, including performances from Tommy the Clown and other musical acts. Some families even picked up some plants and trees.
It's a day to celebrate the earth and the environment, really educate people and promote the goals of sustainability and healthy living.
The Second Annual Seismic retrofit Resource Fair, sponsored by the mayor's office, was held recently at the L.A. Convention Center. The fair provided information, materials and resources for owners of soft story and concrete buildings who must comply with the recent mandatory retrofit ordinance for these types of buildings.
Retrofit is very important because it'll strengthen buildings and could keep them from collapsing. It'll prevent injuries and also will make it a lot quicker for people to get back inside their buildings if an earthquake happens.
Well, each month, the historic core of downtown L.A. gets transformed into a cutting-edge block party with plenty of the latest art for all tastes. Anna Marcos takes a look at a special downtown art walk, which honors World Art Day this month.
There were some mighty big bunnies hopping about, but then anything artsy goes at L.A.'s Downtown Art Walk. This month also focuses on World Art Day, which is observed throughout the world.
I think the Downtown Art Walk is really a connector. It's a way for people to interact with art in a very personal way. I think a lot of people are thrown off a little bit by the really sort of clinical white box gallery. A lot of the gallery owners are very open to talking to people about the art, the artists, the exhibitions.
About 40 galleries take part in the monthly art walk, which draws about 3,500 people in just a few hours. The event has become so popular, many fans are clamoring for performance art as well. And organizers and artists are giving it to them, as in this mandala project, in which regular old people help create art.
Tonight, we are actually creating a circle with people, a human mandala, where everybody's laying on the floor in a circle, connected and together in unity for a few minutes.
And the regular old people love it, too.
You gotta get involved in the art in Los Angeles, you know what I mean? It's all a part of the culture, and I really love it.
She's having fun, taking in the experience, doing something different with my homies.
So this is art for homies, bunnies and regular old people like you and me. And if you miss these masterpieces, no worries. It all happens again on the second Thursday of every month. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
DJs, specialty cocktails and great food were also part of the fun. Well, enjoy cupcakes and other sweets while helping out a good cause, check out the work of local artists during an art show and help spruce up a middle school in Tarzana. All this in this week's Things to Do. The Sugar and Stilettos Charitable Foundation raises awareness and funds for the West Side Food Bank to help end the issue of hunger and food insecurity in L.A. Through an annual bake sale, which brings together the best bakeries, restaurants and shopping in town, Sugar and Stilettos has raised over 200,000 since its first event in 2011. The highlight each year is the crowning of Mr. Sugar and Stilettos, where a well-known personality dones a pair of stilettos, a tiara and a sash for a good cause. The family-friendly event is full of fun, laughs and plenty of sweet treats. It all takes place May 13th from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. at 2306 Midvale Avenue in West L.A. The Rotary Art Show features local and regional artists exhibiting and selling their original artwork twice a year. Since 1969, the Rotary Club of Studio City Sherman Oaks has hosted this biannual art show in May over Mother's Day weekend and the second weekend in October. This show has been held for over 40 years and has been a successful event for artists and art lovers alike. Between 90 and 120 hand-selected artists successfully exhibit their artwork during this two-day event. An estimated 3,000 visitors attend the show each day. Every year, numerous charity organizations benefit from the funds raised by the volunteers of the Rotary Club. The ultimate beneficiaries of these events are people in need. The art show takes place May 13th and 14th from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at Moore Park Park in Studio City. For more, visit rotaryartshow.org. Join friends of the Sherman Oaks Center for Enrich Studies for a fun campus-wide beautification day. Volunteers are needed to help revamp their existing garden and create an outdoor classroom for educational use by the elementary 6th and 7th grade science classes and culinary classes. They will also be cleaning and painting to add lots of color on campus. The beautification event takes place on May 13th from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the Sherman Oaks Center for Enrich Studies located at 18605 Irwin Street in Tarzana. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from All of Us here at L.A. This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org, and you can also follow and like us on Facebook.
Hey, hey buddy. You with the stupid hat. Come here, closer. No parking! Do you know what happens when you park illegally on these narrow hillside streets? You block the street so emergency vehicles can't pass. Each year, homes are destroyed and lives are lost because of drivers like you who park illegally. And you know what else? You can get a citation. And you can be towed.
Help us get to the emergency. The life we save just might be yours.
How'd you know?
The ball called.
Hey, look out for the pothole.
Hi, I'm Mike from Los Angeles. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Good morning, good morning. If everyone could please, please take your seats. It is Wednesday, the 10th of May. I want to welcome you to City Hall, to your Los Angeles City Council meetings. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. All are welcome. Mr. Clerk, we've got a quorum. Would you please call the roll?
Very good, sir. Bloomingfield, Bonnabuiske, Nocerio, Engler, Harris, Dawson, Weezer, Carrasco, Correa, Martinez, Ofero, Price, Rue, Wesson. Eleven members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Carrick moves, and Mr. Weezer seconds. Next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Martinez moves, and Mr. Price seconds. Continue.
Mr. President, items one through thirteen are items noted for a public hearing.
Do you have cards?
Yes, sir. Cards on items one, two, and thirteen.
Let's hold those items. Prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
And, Mr. President, those ordinances will go over one week to May 17 unless reconsidered later today with 12 members.
Okay. Just, I'm hopeful we'll get to that number. Just remind me when it occurs. Continue.
Very good, sir. Items fourteen through twenty-three are items which public hearings have been held. Please be advised that an amending motion for item twenty-one has been agendized and is also before council for consideration. Further, a communication from the Chair of the Entertainment and Facilities Committee has been posted and circulated for item twenty-three. Inasmuch as a public hearing was not satisfied in committee, speaker cards must be taken for that matter. Further, there is a request to send item twenty forthwith, sir.
Okay, let's hold twenty-three, and let's, on the others, let's open, I'm sorry, Mr. Bloomingfield.
For the moment, can we hold twenty-two? I'm going to want to do a friendly amendment on that.
Twenty-two, and twenty-three, we'll hold those. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Continue, Mr. Clerk.
And, Mr. President, again, those ordinances will go over one week unless reconsidered later today.
Thank you.
And, for clarification, item twenty was sent forthwith. That brings us to items twenty-four through thirty-three. There are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards? Up, Madam City Attorney.
There's a CAO recommendation to substitute, on item thirty, to substitute recommendation nine with the following language: Determine that pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines, Section 15378b4, this action constitutes creation of a funding mechanism only and is not a project approval or commitment to a specific project that may have a significant impact on the environment.
Okay. Mr. Carrick.
I'd like to call item twenty-five special.
Twenty-five, yes. On what, was that item thirty? So I'll make the motion, and Mr. Rue, a second. We have cards?
Yes, sir. Cards on all items, sir.
Okay, continue.
Oh, Mr. President, I'm told, I'm told thirty-three does not have a card, so you could vote on thirty-three if you'd like, sir.
Okay, let's vote on that. Item thirty-three, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Continue.
Very good. Items thirty-four and thirty-five are items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold them on the desk?
I would defer to Mr. Correa.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Item thirty-four is a routine settlement that can be considered in open session unless members have questions. Budget and Finance recommends approval. And item thirty-five is a continuation of a previous closed-session discussion we had, and that should be conducted in closed session.
Okay, so we'll do that. Let's, if you'd read thirty-four, Mr. Clerk.
Very good, sir. In the case entitled "Los Angeles Neighbors in Action versus City of Los Angeles," there is a recommendation to expend $193,494.71 plus applicable interest in settlement of attorney's fees and costs.
Okay, so on this item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
That brings us where?
Mr. President, on the continuation agenda, items thirty-six and thirty-nine are items which public hearings have been, have been held. Please be advised that amending motions for items thirty-seven and thirty-eight have been agendized and are also before council for consideration. Lastly, there's a request to send item thirty-seven forthwith.
Mr. Weezer?
Item thirty-six, special, please.
Okay. City Attorney, do you want to make a statement on this?
Let's, I suggest we hold item thirty-seven as well.
Okay, then we'll do that. Continue.
Mr. President, that leaves items thirty-eight and thirty-nine.
Any cards?
Yes, sir. Cards on both, however, public hearing has been satisfied.
Okay, well then, let's prepare to vote on those items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
That brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings council back to presentations. Our items called special.
Okay, I'm going to look over to my left, to Mr. Harris Dawson, to see if he's ready for a very important presentation, a presentation that's becoming a habit.
Yes. Come on up.
I'm not saying it's a bad habit, but it's...
Everybody, thank you so much, Mr. President, and we thank you for acknowledging early how much of a habit this is. I told the guys, I've been on the council two years. We're 2-0. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome the Division One champion Crenshaw High School basketball team. On, on March 4th, where's Mr. Engler? On March 4th, we defeated Granada Hills, sixty-five to forty-five, to secure the Division One championships for the second year in a row. Last year, when they were here, that was the first year since the legendary Willie West that Crenshaw High School had taken the champions, championship. This, this banner makes eighteen for Crenshaw High School. Let's give them a big round of applause for eighteen championships. I want to call forward our coach, who's put forward an incredible assemblage of young men that represent us well on the court and represent Crenshaw High School and all of Los Angeles in a really, really great way. Our own coach, Coach Ed Waters.
Let's give it up for Coach. And before, before, before Coach starts, he was here last year, and I was kind of talking smack with him, and I said, "Well, you got to do it again. Can you, can you come back?" And when it happened, he called to remind me that he is coming back. So anyway, I'm going to challenge you again, and we'll want to make this a three-peat, and I'm so proud of you and all of the guys. The floor is yours, Coach.
Good morning, and thank you so much. I want to remind the President that we, we talked about our guys getting here, and I told you that I was going to make them run from Crenshaw to here, and you provided transportation for us. I want to thank you for that. To Councilman Dawson, and all of your work in helping us to get here, to Kevin Chanti, I think his name is, for his work, for helping us to coordinate this. And there's a very important part today. Our principal, who was really disappointed that he could not make it here last year, is here today, and I just want to acknowledge that he is here, Principal Corley, and just let him at least say something to the council right quick.
Thank you. Good morning, Council President, Mr. Wesson, and also to our local Councilman, Mr. Harris Dawson. On behalf of the entire Crenshaw High School community, we are so thankful and proud of this opportunity. We appreciate the recognition, and, and not only the recognition for these young men and their academic, their athletic achievements, but these young men are also academic achievers, and they are men of high character. So I'm very proud of not only what they've accomplished on the floor, but what they represent within the community. That's a credit to their families, to their coach, and it's something of great pride for our whole school community. For, thank you for letting these faces be shown as young men who are on the move and doing the positive things that we need to see in the community. So, thank you.
Thank you so much to the coach and the principal. I also want to acknowledge, I think I see a mom back here, and some parents. You would just wave your hand? All right, let's, let's give Mom and Dad a big round of applause for providing the homes and, and raising these young people to be the champions that they are. Last year, our coach, last year, our assistant principal, Guy Quinn, said, "We absolutely guarantee..." There he is. Come on, you should come up front so people can see you. "Last year, you guaranteed that we would be back here this year."
Yeah, we'll see you next year, too.
So I'm asking for a guarantee for next year. We got it? All right.
I guarantee it.
So 2018 champions, Crenshaw High School basketball team. One more round of applause.
And if, if I could just say one other thing, Mr. Harris Dawson, to the, to the, the young men, we are very proud of you. And in order to win a championship, you guys have to work together as a unit, and it takes everybody trying to think like the other guy. It takes a great coach that can identify talent, but it really, you know, your parents are never given enough credit for, you know, all of the sacrifices that they make to, you know, keep you moving in the right direction. And so why don't you guys give your parents a round of applause? I want the team to applaud all of the parents. And the last thing that I'll say on this, fifty, sixty years from now, when you're rocking in a chair, you will never, ever forget that game, that moment. You'll be able to talk about every minute to minute to minute, and that's just a wonderful feeling, and I'm so happy that that's a memory that nobody will ever be able to take from you guys. You are champions, and you're welcome in City Hall. This is your City Hall. Let's give the champs one more round of applause.
We've got another quick word from Coach Waters.
Thank you so much. I have so much support, the hidden figures that help us out. I can't leave here without thanking my coaches. Coach Locke is here, who is Chair of our English Department, and, and our special ed department. Coach Givens is here. Coach, where are you at? Ms. Williams, who is our magnet coordinator, helped to coordinate to get us down here. Ms. Williams, are you here?
Yes.
Okay. And then, our community relations person, an alumni of Crenshaw High and alumni of UCLA, which I might add, one of our young men has been academically accepted to UCLA. Our other four seniors have been accepted, our other four seniors have been accepted to Cal State Northridge, and our captain, Chris Kendricks, has been accepted to five HBCUs. So these young men are doing, doing what they're supposed to do. But Frosty Mack, who is the founder of Academics First Youth Organization, who helped these young men, where are you? Thank you so much for your help. Thank you again.
You guys can just go on and follow Mr. Harris Dawson.
Mr. President, at this point in time, we do have 12 members. Would you care to reconsider the ordinances?
Okay, let's vote on reconsideration if you'd identify those items.
Very good, sir. Those would be items three, four, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, thirty-eight, and thirty-nine.
Okay, so let's vote on reconsideration. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate.
Twelve eyes.
Now, let's actually vote on the, the items themselves. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, let's now vote on item thirty-seven, whatever questions have been answered. So now, item thirty-seven is before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
All right.
And again, Mr. President, there is a request to send item thirty-seven forthwith.
Okay, so without objection, so ordered. Okay, Mr. Bloomingfield, on your item, was that twenty-two? Are you ready to?
Yeah, I wanted to offer a friendly amendment recommending that the two, we, the report originally was asking LAPD and grid to report back, and we'd like to remove LAPD from that report back. It's not necessary for LAPD to report back, only to have the grid office report back.
Okay.
So it's a technical minor amendment.
All right, so let's vote on this item as amended. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, we'll go to the multiple speaker cards. Eric Previn? All right, Eric, you're on items thirteen, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, And you did fill out a card on thirty-five, but we don't have public comment on that, so all the other items.
And also, for the record, thirty-seven, so.
No, we already had the hearing on that as well, so the other items.
You continued it from yesterday. You made a substantial change, and you need to take comments on thirty-seven, the Prop K assessment for 2017, 2018, sir. So that is...
Just for the record, Mr. President, we took additional comment after the substantive amending motion on that item yesterday, and public hearing was closed.
Right, but the 4 million Angelenos who live here didn't see it because it was done in the meeting. Only people in the meeting knew about that, sir, so that's not going to cut it. But I do appreciate your comment, and we can move forward now. Item twenty-five is an embrace to the biodiversity community. We have the city council under Mr. Carrick's leadership, looking at the feasibility of implementing the city biodiversity index and all sorts of other extraordinary things, presumably including rescuing the elephant from the zoo, which is Mr. Carrick's little project off to the side. Item number twenty-six through twenty-nine or so, they have a series of vacation of properties, fourteen thousand for the smaller versions, and up to thirty-five or thirty-six thousand for the larger versions. It's nice to do all of them at once quickly so nobody really notices, and you give away the property. Now, most of these are to facilitate something that we want in the districts. It's just that, it's just that we don't really know because they come fast and furious, and like with item thirty-seven for Prop K, you don't really take comments. On Prop K, if you look at that case file number, which I'm going to, as a courtesy, provide for you, 17-0220...
Mr. President, the Speaker is not on the items that he's...
Yeah, no, that's, that's usually the case.
Okay, well, no, that's not usually the case. I'll be happy to go on to the...
It is usually the case, almost every day, actually.
I mean, in protest, sir, so that's appropriate.
Just about every day.
The closed session items which you are meeting on today, I am allowed to speak on. I signed up for both.
You can speak on the ones that, again, if it's already been satisfied, you can't.
But one of them, you haven't gone into closed session, so I'm giving instructions when you go into closed session. On the Gabot matter, that's thirty-five. It is appropriate. You can check with the city attorney. And the comment is, this is a dangerously precedent...
Yeah, no, thirty-five, we actually did have public comment on that already, so.
No, you didn't, sir.
Yeah, we, we did.
What are you talking about? I'm the first speaker.
Mr. President, public comment was satisfied for the item...
Yeah, we already had it, yeah, last week.
So you don't want to take comments on that one either? Okay.
Well, we do, and we did, and we satisfied it.
Yeah, but your system is skewed. Okay, thirty-one certainly is an, an item. This is the Los Angeles African-American Women's Public Policy Institute. Here we have a request. It's to put some money together to have a meeting, and I appreciate, I support that. At that meeting, I would suggest that you discuss, and Mr. Harris Dawson would agree, that the Miraloma Detention Facility the county wants to build up in Lancaster is harmful and hurtful to the women of South and other parts of Los Angeles. It's not a good idea. It's a opportunity to take women who are the glue in families, not just in South Los Angeles, but all over Los Angeles, and for various minor offenses that Jeff Sessions is now amping up to send people back to jail for drug offenses. We're going to rip apart families and do so in a way that puts the women up in Lancaster in harm's way because there's something called Valley Fever, sir. I know you know about that area because up in Kern County, the ones that don't want sanctuary status, the ones that you went to for the exclusive RFP for the tasers.
Okay, thank you very much. Now you have one minute for general public comment to speak to whatever you wish that's under the purview of this body.
Okay, thank you, sir. I will speak about how inappropriate Strahan-Fauber, who's slinking off now, and the city attorney, David Michelson, are regarding Prop K, which is a voter-approved initiative from 1996 that sought to earmark certain projects around town for parks and rec upgrades and various things. Unfortunately, you have moved diligently, there's something like, I think it's $6 million being billed back to the city, but it's worse than that because there's been a game played with the way the money accrues and the inflation for different projects. So the, the project in my neighborhood, that the neighborhood almost knows nothing about, has expanded considerably. They refuse to have the LVNOC meeting, which Kimbro Gonzalez, who's the city attorney who's informed about this, knows about. And so this is basically just an opportunity to take our taxpayer money and put it into service. Carrick has a... Coretts has a modern gym in his district that's just like the one we're going to get in Studio City, but we're the rich districts. And the people of Marquis Harris, there, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Walsh?
Mr. Walsh, you're on Items 1, 2, 24, 25, 30, and 32. John Walsh, logging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential. Number one, concerns lighting. Again, you do a good job on lighting. I'm not one of those people who say, "You do a terrible job on everything! I'm a white man!" I'm sorry, I'm not that kind of person. You do a good job, I'll let you know you do a good job. This concerns biodiversity index. Protect and improve the biodiversity of the city. The city is falling apart. There is no biodiversity. We have superbugs here, superbugs. And I just want you to know that these chairs here have bedbugs in them, because you never clean them. They have bedbugs. When you come down here and sit in these chairs up here, these benches, you're going to get bedbugs. Some people have told me they have received bedbugs from here. Now, number 30 is, this is bond oversight. This is the CRA. Now, I got up, the first time I ever got up at a meeting, in 1973, '72, I said, "I'm going to bury the CRA." And I did bury it. But the CRA has produced, in the last few weeks, in the past few months, an additional $1.656 million. The CRA doesn't get any of that damn money, it comes to LA. Thanks Jerry Brown, I will never attack Jerry Brown, because what he did was make, he did to the CRA, he did to them, he buttholed them. He screwed them in the butthole, and they don't exist anymore. Thank you, Jerry Brown, for what you did. And you were just doing what we asked you to do. And the last, the last one is number 32, and this is shooting of Raymond Gilbert Davila on February 12, 2017. I just want people who are going to go to the Olympics, if you come here and you are murdered, no one is going to testify. There are free murders here, anybody.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead and take your one minute for general public comment as well.
Okay, Mr. Sadio isn't here, but Mr. Sadio is going to be re-elected. The scumbag running against him, the racist scumbag running against him, is so bad that even Devon Maharaj, who is the editor and publisher of the LA Times, has decided to kick him in the ass. He will not get the endorsement, has been removed. And Devon Maharaj says, "Go screw yourself." Okay? And Monica Rodriguez, vote, if you're in that, if you're not in that district, vote for Monica Rodriguez, because she's running against Paul Krikorian's butthole buddy. And I'm telling you right now, if she were the worst person in the world, I'd vote for her, besides, rather than Krikorian. We are winning. We are getting rid of you people, and we are winning. And you don't like it when we win.
All right, thank you very much. Next, multiple speaker, please. Okay, Mr. Herman. You've got Items 1, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, and 32, and three minutes on the clock.
You already started the clock, fool. All right. Well, if you're here with the lean, I suggest you come in and protest. It's the only way to nail and coffin the interest that these jackasses put against you and your property. And be sure to ask for a certified registered letter that clears this action of protest.
Mr. President, the Speaker is off topic.
It's Item 1, ma'am, the leans.
There are no leans on Item 1.
Thank you, the leans. And then I go into Item 25. Saving an elephant? You ought to save the zoo, the zoo from your destruction. Then going to Item 26, communication from the city engineer between the 11th Street and 12th Street, CD1? No one fucking cares. Then I go into Item number 28, CD14. Who could that be? Who could that be in CD14? The fat bald guy relative initiating a vacate? How many more vacates do we need?
I don't know. I'm the city attorney, I just follow orders.
Well, fuck your CD14 on Item 28. Now, onto Item number 30, communication by the CRA. Walsh put it very clear. Jerry Brown, our governor, said, "Stick it up your ass, CRA. You're no longer taking the money away from the public and redeveloping LA into a poverty pimp homeless institution." Right? So the $3,000 for the CRA exes bond proceeds available to console? District 10? I recommend no. Then, now I'm going into the so-called issue of police brutality. But no, this is in Weezer's district, to offer reward of information leading to the identification, apprehension of some stupid dumb asshole that goes into the community and guns down a poor innocent man by the name of Raymond Gilbert Davila. Now, $50,000 is not enough to say snitches are bitches, because snitches become bitches if you're found out, and you're going to get bitch slapped, so don't snitch. Now I'm going into Item of the Maps, nobody cares, the elections were rigged. So now on Item 35, sir, regarding the Colorado bicycle incident, or accident. No to the Olympics, because we've become the hidden run capital of the world. Judge Dean Ferguson's son did not deserve to die on his bicycle out on the canyons, riding his bike.
Mr. President, the Speaker doesn't have a card on that item.
Okay, you've got to stay, you've got to stay directly on the items, please, as you know.
Now on general public comment. Rookie, listen, rookie. Are you listening, rookie? You sound like that. All you do, rookie, is squeak. If it wasn't for you sitting there together, Mo and Larry, you forgot Curly. I suggest you put a fat bald fucker or some woman named Jane that runs the show here. Yeah, you should stop smoking cigarettes, Herb, or no, Herman. Stop smoking cigarettes.
The Speaker is not on subject matter...
You're not, you're not on any subject matter under the purview of this council. If you're going to yell, we're going to cut off your mic. Yeah.
So the issue here today...
No yelling. There's no yelling, Herman. Yeah, you're yelling.
I'm only raising my voice now.
Well, raising your voice, no, you don't, you're already miked, so no more mic, but you can continue to talk.
I'm not doing it.
All right, so now you're off, your time is up. Thank you very much.
I will stop.
No, you're done. Thank you, your time's up. Sergeant, please escort him to his seat. If you're going to disrupt the meeting, we're going to ask you to leave. Thank you. Thank you very much. Now you're, oh, anything else? Yeah, okay, have a seat, thank you very much. So I see a lot of new faces in the council today, and looks like some young future leaders in front of us with some distinguished guests, so I want to recognize them as here. And I want to just let you know that we're glad you're all here. We're happy and delighted that you've taken the time out of your day to visit our council chambers. And I don't know if you've ever experienced the extreme of the First Amendment, which you might have just seen on display. And one of the things that we're proud of in allowing that, and I'll say that again, we're proud of allowing the First Amendment here, is the very freedoms this country provides that no other country has, that the men and women who have sacrificed and given the ultimate sacrifice to allow that kind of speech, we think about them. We think about them and their families every time we hear somebody like that come up to the microphone, because that's what this country affords us to do. And so I wanted to welcome you all here, and thank you for visiting the Los Angeles City Council. With that, we'll go ahead and take our next speaker, please. Is it Ms. Horowitz?
Yes.
No? Okay. And then we'll just go ahead and take the next speaker after that. Mr. Jimenez? No longer here. Okay, we'll go ahead and file your cards as well. Okay, we're going to go ahead and take Item 36. So, Mr. Weezer, did you wish to speak on Item 36?
Yes, sir.
All righty.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues. This is an item that will allow more unpermitted dwelling units to be legalized and allowed to continue to be used for housing. As we all know, we have a housing crisis in the city of Los Angeles, and it hits our low-income residents even harder. What this will allow us to do is to secure new affordable units across the city while still meeting all fire, life, and safety codes, and bring so many of our existing stock out of the shadows, and allow people to continue to live in them with their families. Recently, the city took a major step toward addressing our housing crisis in adopting the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, which focused on maximizing our existing opportunities in single-family homes. This adds multifamily residents into the fold, and will put thousands of units in line for families to take advantage of. This is a common sense solution, in increasing the city of Los Angeles' affordable housing stock, and protecting many low- and moderate-income Angelenos. So this has been in the works for some time. It came back today with some additional corrections and technical amendments. We voted on this once before, but now that we have the final before us, I think we should all be proud in moving forward to continue to provide much-needed housing to Angelenos. Thank you very much, and ask for a new vote.
All righty, Mr. Coretts.
Yes, I just wanted to say I'm so excited to see this day, because I've been pushing for this since I first got on the council. The city has had what I view as a bad practice for years, of finding these units, kicking out the tenants and vacating them, and wiping out affordable housing that would have cost us hundreds of millions of dollars to build if we were trying to create it. This is a major step forward that we're actually going to preserve. A lot of affordable housing in this city, and I commend everyone that was involved, and ask for your eye vote.
All righty, thank you very much. And so with that, we'll go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That's approved, thank you very much. All right, next items, we're going to take as a group. We're going to take Items 1, 2, 13, 24, 26, 27, 28, 29, 31, and 32. So, folks, those items are before us now. We'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, those are approved. Okay, we're going to go ahead and take Item 30 next, and it is a two-vote item. The first vote will be to substitute. So we'll go ahead and open the roll on Item 30 for substitution. Close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
All right, that's approved, thank you very much.
Mr. President, that item, as amended or as substituted, is now before you for consideration.
Great, thank you very much. And we'll go ahead and open the roll now, as amended, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
We're going to take a couple cards, so we have a little bit of a stack for public comments. We'll get a couple of them done first, and then we'll go back into the other remaining items. Charlotte? Charlotte, hello? Oh? Sir? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Charlotte Pienkos, and I represent the Nature Conservancy, which is a nonprofit, and we are dedicated to protecting the lands and waters on which all life depends. I'm here to speak in favor of Item 25, the biodiversity motion. I think it's been said here even this morning that Los Angeles doesn't have any biodiversity, and that that's not relevant to us, and in fact, it couldn't be farther from the truth. The great city of Los Angeles is located in a globally significant biodiversity hotspot. And in that hotspot, because it's a Mediterranean climate here, and of course, there are only five of those on Earth, we have a share of just the 2% of the surface of the Earth that is a Mediterranean climate, and that is rich in biodiversity. In fact, 20% of all of the world's plants and animals live in Mediterranean climates. So the Nature Conservancy supports this motion, because it really is responding to... Thank you.
Okay, no, thank you very much.
Rob Quan, CD14, speaking on the Justice Fund. In light of what's happening in Washington, DC, I'd like to start with a portion of George Washington's farewell address. Quote, "To the efficacy and permanency of your union, a government for the whole is indispensable. However factions may now and then answer popular ends, they are likely in the course of time and things to become potent engines, by which cunning, ambitious, and unprincipled men will be enabled to subvert the power of the people and to usurp for themselves the reins of government, destroying afterwards the very engines which have lifted them to unjust dominion." Unquote. While you and I may fear for our country, for our republic, these concerns pale in comparison to the immediate threats to life and liberty faced by indocuted immigrants. A government for the whole must include those most vulnerable. While we may have the right to an attorney and a normal criminal court, this does not apply in our immigration courts.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. All right, with that, we're going to go ahead and take Item 23. We have two speaker cards on Item 23. The first one is Sinisha Gorgic. It's an honor to have you here today too, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's my great honor to welcome you all, and in the name of the Republic of Croatia and the Consulate General of the Republic of Croatia. Just to let you know that there are roughly 1 million-plus people of Croatian descent in the United States today. Out of them, 309 live in the Consular area we cover, and this is from the state of Texas to Dakota, all the way to California, and Alaska, and Hawaii. So roughly, we have here in California 100,000 out of them, and half of that number lives in one area, that's San Pedro. The idea of moving Consular to San Pedro is in the interest of that, of those people, and we are here to serve them. And we are grateful to the city council to do the same. And especially, I would like to how grateful we are to Councilman Buscaino for all his efforts to protect our community in San Pedro. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate that. And now it's my honor to bring up the distinguished Rooney Savornich, LA City Councilmember, RET.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council, colleagues, and it's always nice to be back here.
It's always nice to be back here in the council chambers. It's been a while now since I've departed, but there is times where we resurrect ourselves to come back for worthy causes. Today, I would like to ask for your support and to thank Councilman Buzkaino for bringing this motion forward. It is exactly 20 years ago, right now, when a vacated old bank building in downtown San Pedro that was a beautiful edifice was going to be torn down. And this city stepped in, preserved the building, and put it to good use. Here we are 20 years later, able again to put this building to good use. Councilman O'Farrell, thank you for expediting this item through your committee. We now have an opportunity to have the Croatian consulate offices move to San Pedro and repurpose this building for the intent that it should have been used for. It is a wonderful progress that Councilman Buzkaino is leading in regards to the continued redevelopment of San Pedro. There's a gentleman whose statue is at the back of this chamber, who told me when I was very young on this council, "Son, when given the opportunity to vote, always vote for progress for the people of our city." Today is the day that we get to do that, and I ask for your support. Thank you.
No, thank you, and we do afford a little extra time for our colleagues, so thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved, thank you very much. All right. Let's go ahead and turn our attention to item 25, if we can.
And, Mr. President, pardon me again, sir, there has been an amending motion 25A that has been circulated and posted for council's consideration.
Okay, while that's going on, we'll put that on the board for a minute, but there was another Charlotte here on general public comment, and I apologize. Charlotte, sure, if you want to come on up. Morning, ma'am, I apologize for that.
Morning, no worries.
There's never enough Charlottes in the world, so, all right, thank you.
Councilwoman Bonin, I'm from Venice, and I voted for you. And President Wesson, thank you for having me here. I have owned my home in Venice for 20 years. The 180-day capacity of Airbnb would really negatively impact our livelihood, my husband and I. Airbnb has been a wonderful asset to small businesses in Venice and around our area. Our neighbors are supportive of us and our Airbnb, and I strongly urge you to stop the proposal of the 180-day capacity per year. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you for that. All right, now we'll go ahead and turn our attention to item 25. We can please, we have some number of speakers on items 25? All right, Mr. Corretts, your name's on the board. Did you wish to speak, or?
Either before or after the speakers.
Okay, well, we'll take you afterwards, that's fine. All right, so we'll open it up first to, we're going to give Mr. Previn and Mr. Walsh a minute each on this item, since there was a change that was significant.
Pass.
Pass, okay. Mr. Previn, you pass as well?
Of course not. All right, come on up.
Sir, where is it? Thank you, it is Eric Previn, and whereas I appreciate your generosity with providing some extra time for former Councilmember Savornic.
Just following the rules.
No, no. And for this item, which I did sign up for, you're absolutely right, and I already commented, but you did make an amendment, so if Mr. Fubel could announce what that amendment is, we don't, I know you guys think that if, once you amend something, then the public is aware of it, but we don't know.
If we amend something to significance, then...
Okay, so what is it?
Okay, so we amended it, it was considered significant, so we reopened up public comment, and that's why I called you up.
I appreciate that. So what is the significant amendment?
Just for the record, the amendment has been posted on the board for probably the last half hour.
Is there a system that you'd like to articulate about how that works? Because we have a very hard time following what you're doing, Mr. Fubel. I know you are a sneaky, good guy.
So we follow the rules. If you want to speak to the item, you can, or you can hold those comments for general public comment.
Sir, I've already, you're a little delusional, sir. I've already given my general public, but thank you.
Well, I'm sure you'll be back tomorrow. All right, thank you very much. And so the next ones, I'd like to call Shona, followed by Melissa Martin, Bruce Campbell, Tony Tucci. And I know, Charlotte, we already had you speak, so we'll note and file your card that you spoke on that item already. Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Shona Ganguly with the Nature Conservancy, here with my colleague Charlotte. We are very supportive of the biodiversity motion. We are ready to participate in any sort of, or lend support to the technical advisory committee. We think this is really important in meeting the sustainability plan goals to develop biodiversity indicators and to enhance habitat across the city. And thank you to Councilman Corretts for your leadership. We've been supporting the process since 2015 and are really happy to see this come forward. I hope that all of the council will vote yes for this motion, and that's my comment. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much. Next speaker, please. And the other speakers can come on up if you'd like, so you're ready to speak, and that'll be followed by our final speaker, Jared Weaver. So, we've got Melissa, Bruce, Tony, and Jared. Come on up. Good morning.
Hi. Thank you for allowing me to speak on this very important motion that's before the council today. As you're all aware, the city of Los Angeles is in a biodiversity hotspot as a Mediterranean climate. These climates are, they afford for a lot of eco-tones, and we're so blessed, that's why so many of us live here, for this beautiful climate that also supports humanity and a great diverse array of species. Many cities around the world are embracing this concept, sort of as a sister to sustainability. I believe that all Angelenos deserve to be able to wake up, to hear birdsong, to see the fluttering of butterflies, and to experience all the beautiful animals, the coyotes, P22 and his family. And it's, it proves us to move forward with elite cities that are having biodiversity plans around the globe to make this a reality for Los Angeles and a leader with ecosystem services. Thank you.
No, thank you very much. Good morning.
Good morning, council members. My name's Tony Tucci. I'm the director of Citizens for Los Angeles Wildlife, here to enthusiastically support this motion of biodiversity. Biodiversity is the diversity of life. And it's very exciting for me, constantly advocating for animals, to be able to come into a room with people who are also advocating for sustainability, for our LA River, and for all sorts of different elements that exist in this city. What I do see, that our city faces a perception problem, perhaps that it's too big, or perhaps that the left hand doesn't know what the right hand is doing. But, you know, this is a really great emotion and product that brings everyone together in a working group. It's so exciting to be able to sit in a room and read the data of the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, or the data of UCLA's grand challenges. And what I think the biggest and first outcome is, department heads in our city will become thought leaders by being a part of biodiversity.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thanks for being here. Good morning.
Good morning, council members. I'm Bruce Campbell, and I'm happy to support the Corretts' Bloomingfield Resolution in regards to encouraging biodiversity, ecosystem services, and equity-minded citizen science projects that serve a full range of neighborhoods in Los Angeles. I was on the Sierra Club interview team for the mayor's race back in 2013. The main thing that distinguished Garcetti from his opponent Gruel was that Garcetti indicated that he would integrate environmental concerns into everything the city does. Thus, a directive somewhat like this should have already been relayed to city departments, I would hope. You've already heard that the California Floristic Province is a global biodiversity hotspot, the only one in North America, north of Mexico. And I will point out that emergency measures such as mowing flammable vegetation will not be interfered with by passing this measure. Thanks so much for your support.
All right, thank you.
I'm your final speaker, Gerald Weaver with the National Park Service. I would like to thank you for the opportunity to support the biodiversity measure. As a reminder, the National Park Service is mandated to understand and protect the natural resources and parks for future generations. As one of the largest urban parks in the LA area since 1978, we've been protecting bioresources throughout the area since then. We applaud and support the steps taken by this motion, specifically to move forward to better understanding biodiversity across the city and to form a technical advisory committee. The National Park Service would be happy to participate in this process in whatever ways the city deems appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Dan, is her last speaker?
Council members, hi. Daniel, guest from City Watch, I came to report on this item today, using my LAPD press pass, and was denied. We'll make note of that for the future litigation. You know, it's not that biodiversity is a bad subject, it's good in its intent, but if you guys can't fix the damn potholes, what makes you think that people are going to believe that you're going to fix or improve biodiversity? If you can't improve the traffic, what makes you think people trust you to use this money wisely? If you can't provide some security at major thoroughfares or improve, my God, there's burglaries at my parents' condo, you can't stop that? What makes you think people trust you to deal with biodiversity? You can't do the basics in running this city, why are you tackling biodiversity? Not one of you has a PhD in science, it is nothing but policy masturbation. Thank you.
Thank you again for that, Dan. Mr. Corretts?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I want to thank Councilmember Martinez and Council President Wesson for scheduling this item today. It's a little bit wonky, so I'll give a little bit of an explanation. LA's, excuse me, I'd have to ask that Mr. Herman be instructed not to be snorting during my comments.
All right, please keep the sounds down again.
I know he's trying to interfere and distract at every opportunity.
All right, that'll be your final warning. So any other animal sounds, and you'll be asked to leave council chambers for disrupting this meeting. Thank you very much, Corretts.
And so LA is known for being in the California Floristic Province, which was mentioned earlier, one of 35 biodiversity hotspots in the world, which means we have some of the richest varieties of plants and animals that aren't found elsewhere. Unfortunately, this designation also means that our biodiversity is threatened, and the good news is that we can do something about it. This motion gives more context to a lot of the work that we've already been doing and moves us forward. Healthy biodiversity is why we need wildlife corridors, why we need to stop using rodenticides, why we need to replace lawns with pollinator-friendly native plants. And I've distributed a substitute motion that I'm introducing today, so that we're not creating working groups that need to be covered by the Brown Act, but instead are directing the departments to solicit input from local stakeholders, including universities, NGOs, and government agencies like the Natural History Museum, to create a system to evaluate and track the biodiversity in the city and report back on opportunities to sustain and enhance the city's biodiversity, with an emphasis on outreach and assistance to communities which don't have much access to natural areas and open space. The ultimate goal is to identify and then develop a no-loss biodiversity strategy for the entire city. It may seem like a daunting task, but Singapore, with 5.5 million people, have done it. Cities like Phoenix, Arizona, have done it, and if they can do it, we can do it. The journal Bioscience this month featured a global survey of biodiversity policies and plans across 40 major cities in the world. Los Angeles was not on the list, but with your support today, we will be on it going forward. So I thank you and ask for your support.
Well, thank you very much. And, Mr. Corretts, we'll make sure that you go visit Arizona and take a look at theirs as well. So with that, we'll go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved, thank you very much. All right, so let's go ahead and recess the regular meeting, and we're going to go ahead and go into the closed session item. So I want to thank you all, folks, for coming. For those of you that want to, we're going to clear council chambers. Okay, we're asking you to please adjourn, or please vacate council chambers, so we can go into closed session.
Police are investigating a series of bizarre and disturbing attacks that have left children in cities from coast to coast injured and fearing for their safety. As Global Zaniga Bauer tells us, the young victims were targeted simply because of the color of their hair.
Stay better and well. We begin with an eyewitness news exclusive disturbing video of a gay man being beaten in Queens.
The individual was attacked simply for his orientation, and we're just not going to tolerate. to tolerate it.
The word hate is just unexcusable. It's a word that shouldn't be used, and to hate somebody for the color of their skin is just not right.
It creates fear among all of the community members.
I think it's wrong how people discriminate against others just because of the way they prefer people, as in gaze or just their skin color. It's wrong, and something needs to be done. A hate crime is any criminal act directed against a person based on the victim's actual or perceived nationality, religion, sexual orientation, disability, gender, and especially Examples of hate crimes include acts which result in injury even if the injury is slight, threats of violence that look like they can be carried out, acts which result in property damage, any criminal act or attempted criminal act, including property damage directed against public or private agencies.
A suspect can spend up to one year in jail, and if it's a felony, it could either be between two and four years for a prison sentence.
If you believe a hate crime has occurred or will occur, you are very much encouraged to contact the Los Angeles Police Department or the Weetab hotline. Public cooperation is often essential in solving hate crimes. Weetab hotline, 909-987-5005.
Property theft has spiked in the area the past year due to easy access for thieves. Almost 80% of car theft occurs because of unlocked doors. Locking your doors takes a matter of seconds and can become so routine that you may forget whether you locked your doors or not. But it's worth the effort to double-check. The more successful thieves are at taking items out of a car, the more chances they are going to come back to that area. Don't let our town be that area. One simple precaution is to hide or cover any valuable items when leaving your car unattended. Simple actions like these can prevent you from becoming a victim of property theft. The Los Angeles Police Department would like you to remember: lock it or lose it.
Such laws aim to establish a safer community and to better protect people from becoming victims of crimes or becoming involved in a crime. Most people don't agree with our curfew laws and would rather run the risk of being picked up by the police and ticketed for violation of curfew. However, they are more likely to run into the many real dangers that face us every time we go out at night.
We've found that kids out so late are normally caught up in violence, traffic accidents, and when we, uh, have to no good. Some of these kids still don't, they're not aware of the, uh, the law and they're not educated on it.
Drinking, drugs, sexual predators, and gang-related activities are only few of the dangers we face regardless of how young or old you are. If you are under the age of 18, this law applies to you. What happens if you are caught? You will be taken to the station where the ticket is written out to you and your parent or guardian are called to pick you up. If your parent cannot pick you up, you will be placed into a protective custody or sent to a juvenile facility.
Guardian at something like an event such as Crowell Beach.
The guardian is not just someone appointed to by the parents, it's a guardian is someone appointed by the courts.
You can legally stay out late if you are participating in a religious, educational, or political activity accompanied by a parent or guardian, going to or from their place of employment, responding to some type of emergency, returning home from school, cultural, or recreation activity.
And that's our message is not only enforcing the curfew violation, but also educating them that they, uh, they need to stay home and stay safe.
The curfew laws are not just here to protect us, they are here to protect the safety of everyone in our community.
Police are investigating a series of bizarre and disturbing attacks that have left children in cities from coast to coast injured and fearing for their safety. As Global Zaniga Bauer tells us, the young victims were targeted simply because of the color of their hair.
Stay better and well, we begin with an Eyewitness News exclusive disturbing video of a gay man being beaten in Queens.
The individual was attacked, uh, uh, simply for his, his orientation and, uh, we're just not gonna tolerate.
The word hate is just unexcusable. It's a word that shouldn't be used and to hate somebody for the color of their skin is just not right.
It creates fear among all of the community members.
I think it's wrong how people discriminate against others just because of the way they prefer people as in gaze or just their skin color. It's wrong and something needs to be done. A hate crime is any criminal act directed against a person based on the victim's actual or perceived nationality, religion, sexual orientation, disability, gender, and especially race. Examples of hate crimes include acts which result in injury even if the injury is slight, threats of violence that look like they can be carried out, acts which result in property damage, any criminal act or attempted criminal act, including property damage directed against public or private agencies.
A suspect can spend up to one year in jail and if it's a felony, it could either be between two and four years for prison sentence.
If you believe a hate crime has occurred or will occur, you are very much encouraged to contact the Los Angeles Police Department or the WITIP hotline. Public cooperation is often essential in solving hate crimes. WITIP hotline, 909-987-5005.
Property theft has spiked in the area the past year due to easy access for thieves. Almost 80% of car theft occurs because of unlocked doors. Locking your doors takes a matter of seconds and can become so routine that you may forget whether you locked your doors or not. But it's worth the effort to double check. The more successful thieves are at taking items out of a car, the more chances they are going to come back to that area. Don't let our town be that area. One simple precaution is to hide or cover any valuable items when leaving your car unattended. Simple actions like these can prevent you from becoming a victim of property theft. The Los Angeles Police Department would like you to remember, lock it or lose it.
We've never had a traffic accident like this before where a teenager has decided to run from the police and then struck by a motor vehicle.
585-NI-CF-5060-13.
Curfew laws restrict the right of juveniles to be outdoors or in the public places after 10:00 PM until sunrise the next day. Such laws aim to establish a safer community and to better protect people from becoming victims of crimes or becoming involved in a crime. Most people don't agree with our curfew laws and would rather run the risk of being picked up by the police and ticketed for violation of curfew. However, they are more likely to run into the many real dangers that face us every time we go out at night.
We've found that kids out so late are normally caught up in violence, traffic accidents, and when we, uh, have to no good. Some of these kids still don't, they're not aware of the, uh, the law and they're not educated on it.
Drinking, drugs, sexual predators, and gang-related activities are only few of the dangers we face regardless of how young or old you are. If you are under the age of 18, this law applies to you. What happens if you are caught? You will be taken to the station where the ticket is written out to you and your parent or guardian are called to pick you up. If your parent cannot pick you up, you will be placed into a protective custody or sent to a juvenile facility.
Guardian at something like an event such as Crowell Beach.
The guardian is not just someone appointed to by the parents, it's a guardian is someone appointed by the courts.
You can legally stay out late if you are participating in a religious, educational, or political activity accompanied by a parent or guardian, going to or from their place of employment, responding to some type of emergency, returning home from school, cultural, or recreation activity.
And that's our message is not only enforcing the curfew violation, but also educating them that they, uh, they need to stay home and stay safe.
The curfew laws are not just here to protect us, they are here to protect the safety of everyone in our community.
Police are investigating a series of bizarre and disturbing attacks that have left children in cities from coast to coast injured and fearing for their safety. As Global Zaniga Bauer tells us, the young victims were targeted simply because of the color of their hair.
Stay better and well, we begin with an Eyewitness News exclusive disturbing video of a gay man being beaten in Queens.
The individual was attacked, uh, uh, simply for his, his orientation and, uh, we're just not gonna tolerate.
The word hate is just unexcusable. It's a word that shouldn't be used and to hate somebody for the color of their skin is just not right.
It creates fear among all of the community members.
I think it's wrong how people discriminate against others just because of the way they prefer people as in gaze or just their skin color. It's wrong and something needs to be done. A hate crime is any criminal act directed against a person based on the victim's actual or perceived nationality, religion, sexual orientation, disability, gender, and especially race. Examples of hate crimes include acts which result in injury even if the injury is slight, threats of violence that look like they can be carried out, acts which result in property damage, any criminal act or attempted criminal act, including property damage directed against public or private agencies.
A suspect can spend up to one year in jail and if it's a felony, it could either be between two and four years for prison sentence.
If you believe a hate crime has occurred or will occur, you are very much encouraged to contact the Los Angeles Police Department or the WITIP hotline. Public cooperation is often essential in solving hate crimes. WITIP hotline, 909-987-5005.
Property theft has spiked in the area the past year due to easy access for thieves. Almost 80% of car theft occurs because of unlocked doors. Locking your doors takes a matter of seconds and can become so routine that you may forget whether you locked your doors or not. But it's worth the effort to double check. The more successful thieves are at taking items out of a car, the more chances they are going to come back to that area. Don't let our town be that area. One simple precaution is to hide or cover any valuable items when leaving your car unattended. Simple actions like these can prevent you from becoming a victim of property theft. The Los Angeles Police Department would like you to remember, lock it or lose it.
All right, welcome back to the regular meeting. And, uh, we're back in session. We're gonna take that, uh, the last item. And we're gonna vote on it, uh, and open session.
Mr. President, for item 35 and the case entitled... Elaine Gabay, Emelita Gabay, and Erwin Gabay, City of Los... Mr. President, in the case entitled Elaine Gabay, Emelita Gabay, and Erwin Gabay versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $4.5 million in settlement payable in fiscal years 2016, 17, and 2017, 18.
Yes, um, so we'll go ahead and open the roll on that item. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That's approved. And, uh, let's go back into general public comment. We have three comment cards left that were carried over. Christina, Beth, thank you for your patience.
And, Mr. President, in the meantime, there's been requests from members to send items 23 and 39 forthwith.
Without objection, that'll be the order. Thank you very much. Good morning. Thank you very much. Thank you for your patience.
Hi, we're Loki Lotion. We're a cannabis topical company and California regulations preliminary came out and there's no topical regs. But we know you guys can't address that, but we're here to say we're frightened. This is a big, uh, change for us and we're here as a community to say we're here to educate, we're here to help with this process because it's gonna be confusing and we just wanna outreach to our community and say we're here and let's get through this. Thank you.
Oh, great. Thank you very much. Thank you. Uh, Yvonne Autry, come on up.
Yes, last night we, uh, had the, um, the opportunity and the honor of hearing from a panel of concerned community members comprised of Pete White, um, Malina Abdullah regarding the police. Charter Amendment C would be authorizing, uh, oath-taking, uh, hate hateful criminals known as police officers to attack. It would be giving them the right, under their badge of authority, to continue to abuse, torture, murder, rape, and to sacrifice poor people, black women, uh, people of color without any, uh, type of recourse, without any, um, uh, potential for being penalized or prosecuted. This is in maintenance of the status quo. These are oath-taking, ritual fraternity member devil worshippers attacking the members of the community that have already been labeled for extermination problems, put in that trash for that purpose. So again, I'm speaking against Charter Amendment C, which is of course going to be, um, um, decided next...
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Dan?
Councilmembers, Daniel Gus, I want to remind you when Mr. Englander said that you allow free speech, uh, I'll let you know that we were given the right to free speech in 1791. You don't give us crap. We have had the right to speak our mind here since 1791. I think you should look up Miller online and find out about that. Councilmembers, it's very interesting, uh, Mr. Price knows that, he went to law school. Uh, councilmembers, I think it's very interesting, you're now calling my card last even though I was here first today. I have an LAPD press pass. And as soon as I uncovered Mr. Price's criminal behavior, I was threatened with arrest repeatedly by a commanding officer of the LAPD. Very unwise. I was here the other day to investigate corruption in, in the city attorney's office and I was threatened with arrest again? I guess you're not familiar with the First Amendment. I guess you're not familiar with freedom of the press. Threatening my freedom as a result of being a journalist, big, big, big... Threatening my freedom as a result of being a journalist, big, big, big mistake for litigation.
All right, thank you very much. Seeing no other public comment, that should clear the desk, and we'll go ahead and post and refer the various motions. And with that, colleagues, do we have any announcements? Seeing none, do we have adjourning motions? We have one from Mr. Rue. And if I can get everybody in council chambers to please rise for adjourning motions, everybody to please rise for adjourning motions. Thank you very much. Mr. Rue.
Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues. Today's a... Very sad that I have to adjourn in the memory of Marvin Schulman, who passed away at the age of eighty-five. You know, Marv grew up in West Adams neighborhood in Los Angeles, he attended public schools and lived in the west side of Los Angeles for, throughout his entire life. For thirty-six years, Marv served as a middle and high school teacher at Pastor Junior High, now Forché Learning Center, and came out of retirement to work another ten years as a teacher and mentor at Pacoima Middle School. He taught international relations and American history. Marv worked a number of campaigns over the years. In nineteen fifties and sixties, he worked on the presidential campaigns for Adlai Stevenson and John F. Kennedy, and later Tom Bradley for mayor, Dianne Feinstein for senate. And I was very, very honored to be his local, one of his last local races for my city council. Locally, he started with, he helped to get Roz Wyman elected, and finally myself. After retiring for thirty-six years with LAUSD, Marv joined Los Angeles Field Offices of Senator Feinstein as a field representative, serving the Los Angeles, Santa Barbara, and Ventura Counties from 1993 to 1995. He was also her first LGBT representative for her office, and he had an incredible passion for public service and dedicated his life to teaching, serving his community, and living that passion. He survived by his loved ones, numerous students, colleagues, and friends who remember him as a kind and generous man. And I was able to participate and help, this past weekend, get a memorial together where literally just by his obituary in the paper, hundreds of people came to recognize and remember him. And, you know, he was what's great about community, he was what's great about politics. He was one of those volunteers who just saw me in the paper, read about me, and came on out, and, I mean, was there pretty much every other day. He embodied what it means for civic service, civic duty, and participation in community. And he taught it, he taught it to his students, he showed it, he lived it. I was blessed and honored. I remember, after getting, even after getting elected, he used to send me clippings of newspaper articles, not just on myself, but on just current events with a little note and with his thoughts. He never asked for anything, he was always engaged, he was an amazing man, and every time he sent me a note, I called him and I said, "Let's get together." And of course, I was busy at this job, and, but it just makes you, it makes you think, no matter how busy you are. I mean, it's because of people like Marv, literally, that I got elected, but not just that, but it's the people that I serve. And, you know, in hindsight, I wish I got to, I saw him in his last days, but I wish I got to see him when he was vibrant and had a cup of coffee and heard more stories about all his political war stories, but, you know, it's, it's added that, but he was the best of all of us, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rue. Ms. Martinez, do you have? Now I'll look to the left to see if there are any adjourning. None to the right, then I will adjourn in the memory of Christopher Big Black Boykin. For those of you that were fans of one of the craziest MTV shows that they had out there, Rob and Big with Rob Deardick, the two of these guys did some of the craziest things in the world, and, and it was just unbelievably funny. Christopher, to this day, holds the Guinness World Book of Record for eating, peeling, and eating most bananas in one minute. He also holds the record of eating powdered, the most powdered doughnuts in three minutes. And this is the kind of stuff that they would do weekly, jump off of the head of elephants into some water, install ATM machines. And we, Mr. Weezer and I, had the honor in 2012 to bring in Rob Deardick and honor him, and Big Black was with him. And that's where I got a chance to meet him. He was an actor, comedian, funny guy, good guy, one of Rob Deardick's best friends, very smart, started his own clothing line. He left the show to marry his sweetheart, and they had a daughter named Isis, I believe, and he, he died suddenly at the age of forty-five of a heart attack. So I just felt that it was fitting that this council would adjourn in the memory of really a pretty solid guy and a good guy, a guy that was smarter than most people thought, and one whose businesses were beginning really to take off. If you ever need to get a size six X, you can go to, to Big Black's line and, and get it. But he, I believe he served as a Marine, he was six foot six, powerful guy, he will be missed. No more adjourning motion. Mr. Harris Dawson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'd like to be added on that adjourning motion. Just another reminder, it seems like we get them all too often, just men, when you hit forty, you gotta get your checkups every year, gotta, gotta get your checkups every year. It's, this was a big shocker to everybody who followed, followed him and followed his work.
Yeah, and again, for those of you that weren't here at the time, which are most of you, Rob Deardick was a professional skateboard, skateboarder, and he helped construct skateboard parks within the city of Los Angeles. I know I was fortunate to have two of them. So anyway, we want to adjourn in Christopher Boykin's memory. Members, this meeting is adjourned.